Okay, Mr. Riley, we're ready.
Okay. I'm going to call to order the Student Programs and Services Committee meeting Wednesday, March 17th, 2021. It's now 6:30 PM or past. This meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the governor's guidelines. All right, Sally, over to you.
Great, thank you so much. I am super excited about tonight's meeting. We have two main topics on our agenda, social emotional learning and science curriculum, two of my most favorite topics. And we have some amazing teachers and building principals here to talk about the work they've been doing on these topics. So I am going to actually turn it over to the elementary, a couple of representatives from our elementary curriculum group to, sorry, I'm watching the screen, to start off with our presentation, and then we'll move to the middle school group and the high school group. But I think what you'll be hearing and what you might listen for are a lot of similarities. Well, these are three separate committees. They've taken some similar journeys, get different parts, different journeys, because elementary, middle, high school look different, but with some similar goals and outcomes at the end, tailored based upon feedback from the committee and also to meet our needs of our students at those various levels. So I'm excited to turn it over to the elementary group, and I am actually going to let them introduce themselves first for each committee and talk a little bit about introduce themselves, where they work, and maybe a little bit about why they joined the committee as they start their presentation. So Becky, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So I'm Becky Granatini, and I am an elementary content area curriculum specialist. And I've been very interested in the evolution of our selection of a social emotional learning program. Personally, I just feel that we need to attend to the social emotional needs of our students before we even begin to really connect with those academic areas. Obviously, we know we're in the midst of a pandemic, and that also is kind of one of the key parts to, you know, really putting a lot of time and emphasis on the, a great selection process for this social emotional learning project. And this is, this whole experience has been, has been fabulous. We have a fabulous team here today, and we're excited to share sort of our process with you as well as what our recommendations are. So I'd like to maybe pass off to Patrick.
Sally, you've got a switching between Zoom and Google Meet, so I have to. So my name is Patrick Cohen, and I am the principal over at Hamner Elementary School. And like Becky, I'm very excited to be a part of this committee. And I too share her sentiment that, you know, the social emotional piece of our, for our students and our staff frankly is really critical. As we all know as educators, you know, if our kids are not ready access their learning, they won't be successful academically. So to meet them where they are and to really find a good program that's going to help our teachers to meet them where they are, it's been an exciting journey, and I'm excited to present this with the team tonight.
Maria?
My name is Maria Aparo. I am a kindergarten teacher at Hamner. SEL has been near and dear to me for several years. I worked with young children even before coming to teach public school. It's always been one of my big interests and a big place that I think kids really need that boost. They need to feel loved and they need to feel safe, and they need to know that when they're at school, they're, they're feeling those comforts from the adults that work with them. Most recently, I am working on my doctorate, and SEL was a big topic for me that I researched, and I actually researched a teacher's opinions of SEL training. So being a part of this committee was really exciting to see how that research that I did most recently kind of fit in with the way that we presented it and really brought it home to the staff and made everyone feel inclusive in the process. So that was, that was an exciting piece for me. So I'm happy to be here.
Great, thank you. Becky? Yeah, so, so tonight, we're going to be sharing with you part of our process of the social emotional learning, and we're going to start with the elementary level. And again, I'm hoping like Sally mentioned, that you'll hear some kind of commonalities between all of our processes and leading up to why we think the program that we're recommending is likely a very good fit. And so I'm going to share, part of our process was, we really started to look, we looked at Simon Sinek and some of his work in just developing the why, like, why are we out there looking for a social emotional program right now? And even beyond, like, sort of transcending what's happening right now in terms of our pandemic, really thinking about what is leading us at this point to be looking for something that, that really meets our needs in a lot of different ways. So we came together, we talked about how success really needs to be driven by the why, that we, you know, we need to get on the same page and understand what the important, most key elements of a program would be to us and how our selection of a program, like, what are the different elements of it that are most important to us? So we came together as a lot of different sort of iterations of a selection group. We started with one committee that was, was with volunteers. It was a volunteer process. We came forward and, and learned about some of the different programs that were available. And we talked about the CASL standards, which are the social emotional learning standards. And we just, we thought about like, what important elements do we need to be sure that they include to meet the needs of our students? And so as we did that, we brought our staffs together, and we looked at what at the elementary level, among these teams, what we thought was sort of our why, like, why are we at this point selecting a new program? One of the things that we do know and we do recognize is that we originally had been planning to go with second step, and we were kind of on board with that and beginning the process with that. And then we hesitated and slowed down on that and eventually stopped that process because we were concerned over equity and what we felt were concerns over how individuals are being represented within some of the images. And just from the equity lens, we didn't feel that it was a good match. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't a positive inclusive type of model. So we decided to kind of end our process there with them. And that's part of, that's, that's another kind of piece of our why. So then we began looking at our other programs. Within the elementary level, there were a couple of sort of resounding, sort of why statements that were made. Included in those were, you know, leveling the playing field, creating that equity for students, right? Like recognizing, like Patrick mentioned, that our learners are coming to the, coming to the table that they are ready to learn, right? And because we know that if you are not, if you don't have your basic needs being met in sort of our hierarchy of needs, that you're not going to be ready to learn. So that was kind of a resounding statement that we heard across different individuals from different sort of parts of our school community and stakeholders. Another was that we wanted to be proactive. We don't always, you know, we don't want to wait until there's concern or an issue. We really want to be, you know, thinking of what our children might be facing, what types of challenges they might be having, and really how we can be sort of instilling, you know, whether it's character traits or some, some strategies, lots of different types of strategies that can help them to be, you know, feel more well-rounded, to be good friends, and to be able to develop academically as well as socially in a way that's, you know, gonna impact them the best over time, right? Like, we don't want them to just be successful for a single year. We want them to become lifelong learners and to have a lifetime of positive experiences. And then one of the other key things is that we really want to support them in sort of their executive functioning, right? It's, we know that it's challenging. We think of our students right now, they are learning across settings, they are learning in a multitude of different ways, and with so many different types of messages coming, coming at them, and knowing how to process and organize their thinking. I can't even imagine what it must be like for a seven-year-old. So we know that it's important for them to have sort of some avail, you know, obviously the availability for learning, but also some strong executive functioning skills so that they'll be prepared to be learners in our classrooms. And I'm going to hand it over to Maria at this point.
All right. I hope I don't freeze. I feel like I keep buffering. So if I'm like making a funny face, I don't mean to be. So our committee, as far as our process, we reviewed several evidence-based SEL programs that were recommended by CASL, and the standards were created over two decades ago. Our members reviewed each potential program independently. We participated in presentations from other prospective companies, asked precise questions to make the best decision for our district. The school representatives from the SEL committee brought that information back to their home schools and set up virtual focus groups. This was an avenue used to open up the conversation to any interested staff. In some cases, a representative from RethinkEd, the person John that we worked with very closely, he was there to answer questions, to give overview, and very generously giving of his time. The staff were given access to the website and were able to look at the lessons and look over that portal and investigate it before joining and making an informed decision or being able to ask extra questions. I could go to the next slide, Becky.
Oh, sorry about that.
Sorry. No, no, that's okay. So why did it's, it's stand out for us? Well, based on all the feedback from the schools and the work of the SEL committee, we really felt that RethinkEd met the needs of our students and population and our families, of course. The topics of the lessons are current, their support and they're supportive to our population, even across our district. RethinkEd, RethinkEd meets the needs of our teachers, and the program aligns with our district goals. That information, that's going to be expanded on in some slides that Mr. Cohen will talk about. And the training and support offered by RethinkEd is vast, and they will help us establish a scope and sequence based on the needs and basing on themes and the needs of our district as a whole. The SEL committee will collaborate with other interested staff and leadership teams and be able to decide on the most vital themes that we will use in our district. And then this slide here lists the SEL topics, awareness and awareness of self and other, self-management, social skills, social awareness and self-care. Those are all very valuable for the well-being of our students and our families. And our committee is just really proud to present this very inclusive program.
And I would just like to add that one of the key parts of, if you notice, there are, there are different lessons under sort of these different topic areas. One of the things that we are going to put a strong emphasis on is in creating district-wide themes, so that we can kind of have a continuity that goes across our elementary schools. I think, we think it'll help in terms of teachers being able to kind of collectively, you know, work together through, you know, across different schools. It will also be helpful in our communication with families, because we'll be able to send out a lot of the same messaging around the same kinds of larger themes. And it will hopefully, what we're hoping is it's going to help us to develop a nice sense of community, sort of as a, you know, like a wraparound to the program itself. So, so we're looking at how we, how we can layer in the most effective scope and sequence to meet the needs of our students and our families.
Oh, I'm up. So, you know, one of the, one of the most important things that we know as educators is the connection and partnership between family and school and home and school. And one of the things that that's really important to us and that we've also learned over the course of the last several years is that behavior, you know, we've begun in education to start treating behavior similarly to how we treat academics, and understanding that there's a process to behaviors and behaviors are a communication. So that, that home and school partnership has become increasingly important. And the, one of the nice parts about RethinkEd is that there's actually built-in tools that allow teachers to communicate with home. So there are arrangements around school-wide themes across grade levels to build on integration and school-wide sharing, which kind of speaks to what Becky was just talking about. We'll be able to do that across district, which, again, in the Silver Linings playbook to the pandemic, I have to say, as an administrator, there's been an increased amount of collaboration, not only across buildings as administrators, but also among our teachers across buildings, which is, which has been really nice to see. So this will, will help to continue that effort. It is visually appealing, which we know has to have a nice, nice look to it for us to be engaged with it at times. So definitely something that that was, that caught our eye as well. And it also helps to support our teachers with, with already, you know, kind of pre-created home connection letters, parent access to SEL videos, which will allow parents to actually know what's going on in school and continue some of those same efforts at home. And they have a resource toolkit for parents, which is fairly easy to use and that our families will have access to. It is web-based, so it can be used for in-person, hybrid, or remote, which, again, if we've learned anything over the last year, flexibility is key. So this is actually a very nice option for that, and it is actually accessible through Google Classroom. It's very easy to navigate. It does have very specific scope and sequence, which is nice for our teachers. It really, you know, my, my impression was it was very teacher-friendly, and that seemed to, Maria, correct me if I'm wrong, really be the feedback that we received across the process.
Yeah, no, for sure. A lot of the teachers were happy, you know, first overwhelmed slightly with the portal, but then when we were able to help them navigate through, and you can see just how many things are built right in there and how convenient it was and how well-presented it was, everybody kind of like took a sigh of relief.
Definitely. And, and actually, to that point, you know, you can see, you know, it's nice to see things like it's over 500 easy-to-use lessons, but that can also be somewhat overwhelming. That's a lot of resources, a lot of information. But that actually does, the, the support, one of the impressive things, at least that I had an impression from was the support that we're going to receive from the, the group, the company, that the professional development that will be available to us, and that will be available to our teachers to allow them to really dig in and learn these tools and, and utilize them fairly quickly. And of course, there's academic connections and integration right into our themes in our classrooms. And again, the outcomes do align with our district goals. As Maria pointed out earlier, it's aligned with CASL and built on evidence-based strategies, which is very important. It is, you know, and again, one of the nice features, when we talked, Becky mentioned, some of the issues that we ran into with second step with equity inequality, and kind of the representation that we saw in that. This does have a dual language with English and Spanish supports. It is, there's technical assistance and implementation support for that, which is, again, the way it was explained, really is teacher-friendly and supportive of them doing the work in the trenches. So the next steps for us is students, next steps are student self-assessment and teacher observational assessments as well. So it gives them kind of the guide as they go.
And so here we are, we're, we're at a place where we've had the opportunity to review several different programs, to present them, to share them, to work through them with a lot of different kind of small groups, and, you know, presenting to the larger group to offer opportunities to share and review the program with staff. So now we're at a place where we're, we're hearing a lot of positives, as hopefully you've kind of heard through, through our presentation this evening. So now we're thinking about our implementation plan. We've, we've come up with, we've, we've certainly spent quite a bit of time as, in our iteration, all these different iterations, we have a sort of this SEL group. And we've, we've thought a lot about sort of the timing on how we move this forward. And we recognize that teachers, you know, the, the, one of the worst things you can do is all of a sudden drop a new program right at the beginning of the school year. That can be a very difficult thing. So we wanted to begin to roll this out with some professional development in May, to sort of introduce the platform. We will not have our entire working scope and sequence at that point, because that's something that we're actually going to need to develop over the summer in coordination with the team with Rethink. That's part of their professional development services that they'll, you know, be offering to us is the time to work together with them to develop that scope and sequence and prioritize lessons and whatnot. But we definitely want to provide the opportunity and some professional development as to the program itself, to offer the login information so people can get up and running with it to, to understand the process, how it works. And that, you know, then that kind of leads to the summer curriculum work that we know will need to be done. And so that will include, again, like I mentioned, developing that scope and sequence. As Patrick mentioned, you know, 500 lessons is completely overwhelming. We absolutely are aware of that. And we're going to, the idea is that we develop something that's very reasonable. We prioritize lessons, and we come up with something that's easy to follow and predictable. Additionally, we want to come up with plans for shared communications and methods of rollout, just so that we have consistency across the district. So, you know, similar messages going to parents at all of the different schools. So some of that work will be done across, you know, during that summer curriculum work, to ensure that that's, it doesn't become, you know, a scramble at the beginning of the year. We'd like to have it set to go, so that this becomes a, a, you know, ideally somewhat of a seamless rollout in the fall. And of course, we'd like to think, as I mentioned, we've had a lot of different parts to this committee. And we just are so thankful to the time. This, this has taken some time, right? Because there are a lot of different parts of this program. We really wanted to spend the time to dig into the different aspects of it. So we had some wonderful representation within our group. We had administrators, curriculum specialists, several different grade-level teachers, you know, school psychologists, social workers, you know, director of special services, supervisor, and Sally Assistant Superintendent. So, and then this, these are the people that joined us with some, you know, some formality. Of course, we have a lot of other people that have been sort of digging in and perusing within our schools themselves that have been attending some of our focus group kind of rollout meetings as well. So for all those people that have taken the time to help us to dig in and make sure that this is a good fit, we are very thankful.
Thank you so much.
To hand it off to our middle school update.
So I'll introduce myself. My name is Diana Beardsley. I'm a science teacher at the middle school. And one of the reasons why I wanted to be involved in SEL is I've worked with advisory for as long as it's been around eight or nine years. And also, I'm also going back for my special ed certification, because there's a lot of different behaviors and, and different types of students that I want to be able to reach. And sometimes I feel like I don't have enough knowledge and background to do that, which is one of the reasons why I'm going back to get certified. And I just feel like this is just an important part for all students, and that's why I wanted to be a part of that SEL committee. And Julie, I will, if you want to take a minute?
Hi, I'm Julie Anna Klein. I'm one of the school psychologists at the middle school. I also support at the high school with testing. So SEL is kind of my daily work. So I'm super passionate about it, and I'm really excited that the district is choosing to kind of roll this out at the tier-one level. And I was excited to be part of that and, you know, part of choosing the evidence-based program. So Amanda, I think you're next.
Hi, I'm Amanda Brennan. I'm a special ed teacher at the middle school, and I co-teach our human relations program with Julie, which is a program set up and designed for our students with social emotional disabilities. So we're hoping bringing this SEL work into tier-one and supporting the students as, as a whole, you know, will ideally bring some of the strategies that have supported our higher-needs students into the school as a whole, and hopefully will, you know, reduce potentially some of our needs with special ed servicing around social emotional concerns. And I've really enjoyed being a part of the SEL work at SDMS since the beginning of the year.
Becky, can you move it?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'm just, our why is going to sound very similar to the elementary school with a little twist towards middle school. We quickly realized that not all students, it's not a level playing field, and that's something that we really wanted to focus on is, and as you'll see, I think it's great because we're going to be going with a similar program as the elementary school. So it's, it's just going to be a level playing field as far as common understanding and common language. One of the things I just want to share with that is, Weatherfield is such a great and diverse community, and every year I have a different set of needs with my students. My students last year have different needs than my students this year have. And I just feel like with the program that we selected, we're going to be able to meet those needs, no matter, you know, where students are at. Another thing I'm learning is when you're stressed, I've learned this in school, and, and a science teacher, your brain physiologically cannot focus, cannot get those executive functioning skills working, and, and cannot pay attention and do well, and focus in class, you're more reactive, and maybe we see some behaviors for that, or maybe we're seeing kids just shutting down and not being able to do the best they can in school. So just teaching skills on, you know, related to anxiety or stress will help in the, in academics. Another thing that you cannot see, but I really want to point out for middle school, is really to normalize struggles with these students. You know, students are so afraid in middle school not to be like every other middle-schooler, and they feel like what's going on with them is, is not what everybody else is dealing with. And we really want them to feel like a lot of feelings and emotions you may have, our, our normal feelings that everybody has, and you're not, we're just not focusing it, you know, we're not, people may not share them with you, and really give them a place to be, have support, and, and just feel understood, because I think that's a big challenge in middle school. And then soft skills, you know, you can teach the smartest student to be a great, you know, great in science, but if they don't have, you know, they can't control their anxiety, or they don't have those social emotional skills, and that's what the workplace is looking for, and we're, we're not at the workplace, but we're getting them ready for the high school. So, and we felt that those were really important, important whys, like why, you know, why we should do this, focus on SEL. And there are similar reasons in terms of what the elementary school said. I will.
All right. So our process with our work with SEL started really from, you know, the beginning of the teacher work week before school started. We had a small group work with, kind of digging more into the CASL standards, and really taking a look at how we, we as a school can focus on SEL this year. That was a really large message from admin. Roslyn is here. Thanks for your support with all of this. Roslyn and Cindy made it really clear that that was our goal for this year, was to embed the social emotional learning into all of our activities, in as much of our instruction as possible, to support our students with everything going on right now. So then after we, the small, the small group worked on figuring out and relooking at some of those standards and where we were going to go, we provided staff with a Google Drive folder of some quick SEL strategies that they could use in their classrooms. And we really wanted the focus to be on supporting relationships with students and checking in on their well-being. We also, the, the small group, the, kind of before the, the pre-SEL, SEL committee, we came up with some activities to support adult SEL. We really recognized that that was something that needed to be incorporated into the work as a whole school community. So we had an awesome PD time, where kind of the staff, and we talked about And we talked about staff strategies for SEL and how that can relay into the classroom when they're focusing on their students' social emotional learning. So then, once the SEL committee was formed as part of this process to look at. Which, you know, direct instruction program we were going to be going with, again, similar to elementary schools, we reviewed second step. We really dug into it and, and you know, found that there were some great parts about it. But we were really glad to hear that the elementary schools and the middle, in the high school were also looking at rethink ed. We really talked about, you know, us being in that middle space to make sure that our work was aligning with the elementary school and the high school. So some of us in the SEL committee attended the presentation for the rethink ed. And Julie's going to talk about kind of why we, why we really decided why the rethink ed was, was the best fit for us as a middle school. And then we did bring in some of the team, the team leaders. To the SEL committee to really kind of talk about how we could implement this in a way that fits our middle school model the best.
Thank you, so like Amanda said, we looked at second step and then. We ultimately decided to go with rethink ed and just like the elementary school, there is a ton of similarities. What we really liked about rethink ed was that there's these three tiers of intervention, so we had that first tier that we could roll out globally. And then they provide, you know, tier two and tier three interventions for our kids. They also provide a student progress monitoring tool with the program, which is very helpful. Again, just like the elementary school, there is that parent engagement component, which is huge when you talk about social emotional learning. And there's also an adult SEL component for staff that we liked because, you know, I've always learned that if you don't practice it, how can you teach it? So I think that is also very important. Again, it's very easy to integrate with our existing technology, the format is super friendly, the lessons are very clear and. You know, scripted for staff, which is nice, the scope and sequence is, is a little bit flexible, so we can choose kind of how we want it to go, how many lessons we do, which is really nice as well. And then I, what we also liked was that rethink ed also provides us with that personalized assistant or that person that can help us with the implementation and scheduling moving forward. Which is really important to us at the middle school.
And then in terms of our next steps, we really want to educate the staff. Why SEL is important, we've spent a lot of time digging in deep at the reasons why, but. Like Julie just said, in order to get buy-in, you know, we have to be, you know, practice mindfulness and, and learn. And we really want the staff to be able to understand the reasons why and come up with their own reasons why it's important. So we're hoping to share that and even the district vision with the staff so that they can see the bigger picture. Then similar to the elementary school, we're going to do a PD in May and start. Ask for some feedback from the staff, how certain sections may relate to their curriculum so that we can seamlessly put it into. To content and UA classes, we don't want to make this another thing that has to be done, we want to try to make it as seamless as possible. So by getting their feedback and then working over the summer, we're hopeful to have it all set for the beginning of the school year. And I will pass it to the high school after. Sorry, I forgot about this one, yep, so we also had a variety of. Committee members, we had content teachers, unified art teachers, support staff, of course, our administrators. We had district administration and then we had the team leaders just to get, come in on the last couple of meetings, just to get a different viewpoint. And, you know, in the end, I will say that we had our last meeting today because we were successful at what we did and now we have to move to the implementation stage.
All right, thank you, I'll jump in for the high school now, if that's all right. So I'm Stephanie McKenna and I'm an English teacher at the high school, I'm also the department liaison and the reason I joined. The SEL committee is because I think it's important just in general, but especially with the pandemic going on, it's even more important than it. Than it usually is and it's something that not, not every kid gets at home and it's something I think we can definitely help out with at school. Because not only does it help in school, it helps with life skills and just life in general, so I think it's something that can be really beneficial. There's a couple other high school representatives, so maybe I'll pass it off to Alicia if you want to mention, just say hello.
Thanks Steph, so I'm Alicia Becker, I am one of the Italian teachers at the high school. And I joined the committee, you know, just because I see the benefits, you know, when I've tried to incorporate SEL into my classroom. One of our committee members who's not here tonight, Victoria Martin, said, you know, it's, it's just the kids who do have these skills, it's, it's a place where they can shine. You know, it's just another skill set that that's important for our students to hone and it's another way that our students can. Can, you know, just sort of benefit from, you know, being in our classroom beyond the, the academic realm. And also as a, as a parent of younger children, I've seen, you know, kind of firsthand the benefits of explicit SEL instruction. In, in their schools and, you know, having that common language, I know they talked about that at the elementary schools. You know, that we share, you know, as, as parents and as, you know, school community members has been, has been hugely beneficial for, for my own children, so. You know, being a part of bringing that to, to our students at the high school felt really important.
Thanks Alicia, Nella, do you want to pop in?
Nella, you're still on mute?
Pardon, thank you Sally, hello everyone, and Nellis Lagin, the high school librarian. And for me, it was important to be part of this committee because I do feel that social emotional learning is foundational, similar to what all my colleagues have said. Especially in building that relationship with students, but even more so, I love that the programs that we've looked at. Also had the family and community component to it and honestly, the foundation is what helps the kids be successful. academically, like Amanda said, they can, you know, focus on their academics if they're not feeling balanced and well-equipped emotionally. So this is why I joined.
Thanks Nella, and then I think our last member is Tyler.
Good evening, everybody, happy St. Patrick's Day. So I am Tyler Webb, I'm the assistant, one of the two assistant principals at Weathersfield High School. And simply for me, this is everything that I'm all about, SEL kind of drives my. All the work that I do, I think, especially with the students that I work with, oftentimes, most of the kids that make their way to my office. Unless they want to come, are coming because they don't have those sort of, we talk about life skills, we talk about. You know, just the, the success skills that, that people have as they grow up and become adults and so. I do a lot of my individual work with kids trying to. Just give them a, especially because the time is limited that we have them there in high school, try to give them the, the, the quick and, and fast. Conversations with them, but, but more importantly, create relationships with them to understand that they need to, to learn how to. Speak up when they're not feeling good, reach out when they don't understand. And obviously for teenagers, as we all know, they know everything, so that's oftentimes pretty hard for them. But this is work that, that like I said, is, is all about who I am, I'm actually going to start a doctoral program in the fall. In social emotional academic learning, so. I, I, I think it's, it's absolutely critical for, for, for educators today, which is just so contrary to what. I think especially as we talk about the high school, contrary to what we think about what high school is, we think about content, 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 content and. I think more and more it's these, these skills that, that really are critical in trying to build learners. Amongst, amongst all kids who come to high school, so sorry, long, we'll, we'll try to keep it brief and I'll give it back to Stephanie.
Thanks Tyler, so and yep, we'll skip this slide, thank you. So we had a great committee, we met at, I think it was seven, 10 in the morning on Thursday mornings for. A couple of months and we had some really great, rich conversations focused on many of the things that our elementary and middle school colleagues that already mentioned. But looking at student SEL, adult SEL and how we can all use these skills to better ourselves, better our teaching. And, and help our students along, but we, it was a great group and it really was a pleasure to work with everybody, next slide please. Thank you, and much like the other ones, our why, what we're focusing on, really, you know, it, it's all about the kids, you know, we want them to be able to learn how to handle their emotions. We're looking at the kids first as people. And when the kids are emotionally available, they're available to learn as well, so these are all. We're just kind of reiterating what, what our, what the elementary and middle school teachers already said, and then one more slide for me, please. Yeah, and our essential question, how does SEL integrate with equity, which is something very important to our school and our district? NEAS recommendations for accreditation, which is something that we've been working on for the past few months. Restorative practices, which is something that Tyler alluded to a little bit earlier. And vision of the graduate, which is something that we've been working on at the school level and working with the middle school on that. And something we're kind of, we're bringing into our curriculum, so we have a lot of changes going on, all for the good. And there's lots of ways that we can incorporate SEL into that, so I think I'm done and I think we're moving on to Nella, thank you.
Okay, so for my part, I think I'm not muted now, everyone can hear me, hopefully. Awesome stuff, and so we looked, the four things we looked at, it was important that the program meet castle standards and have evidence. Be supported by evidence, so those were the programs that we looked at. Additionally, we wanted to make sure that the, that the selection provided explicit instruction and social emotional skills. That would make it easier for the implementation and in the implementation, it was important that the model be flexible. To meet needs at the secondary level as well. Of course, still to do on our agenda is, you know, to create a system for which teachers can be supported in the implementation. Within their classroom and curriculum, as well as a system of like, how do we review and follow up to make sure that the implementation is successful and stays. You know, on track or it can be tweaked as we need it, so it was important for the programs to have all these components. So if we go to the next slide. Thank you, so on the timeline, we actually started our work, I guess, a little bit later than the elementary and middle school. We started it around January where we actually really reviewed, you know, what the focus would be and what our central question is, as you can tell, there's a lot of irons. In the fire and it was important that, how do we, I think, social emotional learning actually really brings all these different things together. So we discussed about, I think, eight to maybe it was nine different models and programs. And we were able to narrow the list down to two to three and then in February, we went even further. Looking at the indicators more closely, especially as it related to school-wide social emotional learning. And what was explicitly available in the instruction. And when we saw the vendor presentations, that provided us a deeper look into the models, the final two that we had decided on at that point, which was Leader ME and rethink ed. And it helped us as we moved forward to really create a pro con, what are the concerns? What are, what was, what was the best fit and to help us make our final decision. In, you know, the concerns that we have like going forward into April is, okay, so we need to introduce this. And present to our leadership team at the high school. Additionally, we want to make sure that we can make decisions on how it would be incorporated into classes and the various parts of our curriculum. So that it's seamless and really supports the overall school climate as well. And also that it incorporates also the vision of the graduate that we're working really hard to make sure. Accreditation that we've put together and the changing curriculum requirements as well for the high school where we're looking to create a mastery-based credit. Course or experience that students could take advantage of, so the potential was really for this product to really help us hone and. Put together all these different things that we're working on at the high school. So with that, then we decide on the big reveal, now I'm going to introduce you to Alicia again, she'll speak about this section, our final choice.
So three for three, we also chose rethink ed. And if you want to go to the next slide, just quickly, there are a few images. From, you know, from the curriculum and I think something that was appealing and you can kind of see this in the imagery is that, you know, it did feel developmentally appropriate. I think kids can kind of sniff out when something feels like too young or, so that kind of spoke to us, I think. You can kind of see it here and we can go to the next slide, just that it does feel like. So what does rethink ed offer? We liked that it provides video modules for adult learning, so it gives teachers the opportunity. To kind of hone their skills before bringing this to the kids, it focuses on both adult and student SEL and does feel. Again, kind of developmentally on target for high school age kids. It provides SEL education for all students with differing interventions, which felt really important, you know. I think it was Diana who said that, you know, every year it's a different group, you have a different set of needs and. Being able to have some flexibility felt, felt important and valuable. Rethink has professional learning, their assessments, their different curricula, behavior supports and progress monitoring. All of which, and to, you know, kind of have all of those on one platform felt, you know, that it would be kind of streamlined and. An effective way to kind of deliver this instruction. What can we do with it, we felt that we could personalize this and make it our own. You know, as teachers of specific subjects, being able to have the flexibility to kind of, you know, again, put this into. Our own classrooms in an authentic way felt important, we have the flexibility to implement in a variety of ways. And also as, as Nella kind of touched on, and Steph, the idea that we can align this with the vision of the graduate with. You know, social justice initiatives and that there's the potential for this mastery-based credit opportunity all felt. Like important assets that, that rethink provides and now I'm going to turn it over to Tyler if there are any questions.
Yeah, actually, before we get to the question stage for all groups, I also want to introduce three more people that are integral to the committee work that's happened. Who didn't have specific slides to speak to, but Roslyn Bannon, the principal of the middle school, Roslyn, do you want to talk a little bit about your support or?
Sure, absolutely, this has been an absolutely engaging process and a fantastic process. And SEL, like Patrick has said and like Tyler said, as administrators, this is near and dear to our hearts. Because we know that if students aren't available emotionally, they're not going to be available to learn the lessons that we're teaching them. So this is just so, so important, especially as we emerge out of this pandemic and education evolves out of the pandemic. We really have to shift our focus to the socially emotional needs of the students. And it's become more and more apparent as more and more kids are coming back to school that this pandemic has traumatized many students. And that what school looks like now is quite a bit different, so the focus on social emotional learning right now is. Couldn't be any more timely and any more necessary than what it is right now and. We really are shifting our mindset to what's fair for one isn't fair for all in the spirit of equity. And in keeping an equity lens throughout the way we deal with our students and knowing that relationships are the key to success. And that those relationships that we form, not only with the students, but with the parents as well, is. is key to our success and key to our students' success, more importantly. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're all here for, the success of our students. To have them have healthy minds, healthy bodies and to learn as much as they possibly can learn from us so that they can be contributing members of society and be proud of all that they do. And we can be proud of the work that we've done with them.
Thank you, Rosalind. And we also have John Kazar, Director of Special Services, and Liz Freitas, Instructional Supervisor for Special Services. John and Liz? I can't see everybody on my screen, so I'm sorry.
So, I don't know. Well, Liz isn't going first. I will. Liz, you there?
Yes, I'm here. It's the Zoom Google switch. It, it's just, it's, it's been an amazing journey over the past four months. And this presentation just highlights all the tremendous work that our teachers, curriculum specialists, our building administrators have put into assuring that our students are receiving what they need and that we're addressing the whole student, not just solely looking at academics, but assuring that they're, they're in a place where they feel safe and that they're in a place where they'll learn these skills. So, I just want to highlight the tremendous work that the committees did, that the teachers put forward on top of everything that they do every day, what they, what they had to offer and to assure that we picked the right program for Weathersfield Public Schools.
Thanks, Liz. And I guess I first want to say how proud I am of the district. And we actually started this process September 1st. We were going to move forward with Second Step. And I'm most proud because people saw that there's some inequities and microaggressions with Second Step. And instead of letting that go and saying, ah, no problem, they thought about our students and the students that it would impact the most. And they said, no, we cannot do that. And so, with this, even though I was like, oh, September 1st, we need to start SEL. I think we got SEL so much further by looking at an inclusive, you know, attitude where everyone could fit in. And I think it started to teach us how to challenge our curriculum, how to look at our curriculum, really in critical manners of how it reaches our students. And at one point, I thought we were going to have three different curriculums and I was like, ah. And, you know, honestly, they all came to this point all by themselves and really three very different processes, seven, 10 in the morning till, oh, yeah, Wednesday, we went from seven, 10 till 3:30 doing SEL. It was amazing and really so proud of the work they've done and, and that they're going to do because the hardest part's yet to come, implementation, because we know staff has so much going on right now. But we know that through this, that we can help ourselves and to help our students. And just one, and I've shared this story, so with the committees, but I'll share it again. I have a wide range of friends. I've been a high school principal for many years. I've had a lot of friends and students that have had a lot of success and some that haven't had much success. And as of today, I've never known anyone who's been fired from a job because of math skills, English skills, social study skills, foreign language skills. I mean, it all helps them, but they've been fired because of social emotional skills. How to emotional, you know, regulate emotions, how to interact with others, how to deal with frustrations. And so, that's really what will provide our students with success, having those skills. And so, thank you all.
Board members provided a lot of information, questions, comments from you.
I have a, oh, I'm sorry, Bobby. Go ahead.
No, but well, first I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And that goes to elementary, the middle school and the high school for doing all this work and for coming up with the same program. That's pretty good. My only question through the whole thing, and there was so much information, and I couldn't agree with you more that social emotional learning is so important, especially right now. In May, you're going to do professional development. Are the teachers going to be given anything? You know, is this vendor said, well, here's your scope and sequence booklet or here's, you know, a computer guide for you. Are you getting anything that will guide you in this program, in this?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. So, we will have, it's all web-based. It's all on a software platform. So, we will have access, you know, by the end of this month for all teachers. And so, the idea that came across in many of the committees was, let's introduce it. So, they become familiar with the platform, the software. And many of our teachers are going to want to do a few lessons or a lesson on their own near the end of the year, especially as we wind down and spring and people get a little antsy. And that's a great time to be able to kind of try and explore it. Some teachers might wait till the fall. We're going to do some follow-up professional development back in August as we come back to prepare to implement. So, what we won't have are kind of how we sketch out the lessons, the order, the themes of which months. But they will have full access to the platform to be able to go in and try a lesson and do it on their time. And those of people that want to wait till the fall for full implementation can do that also. So, it gives some flexibility to our staff, depending upon their, their needs and their time schedule to either try a little bit this, this fall and the spring or wait till the fall.
So, all this information is going to be on the platform of a computer design. Correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Bobby, just with it too, I think three different processes. It's going to look different at all three levels, even though it's the same program. And one thing great about Rethink Ed, they provide coaching of implementation. And I do, and I know Julie's here, but I really do look at our related service staff also of helping with that. Coaches of, you know, of them really, you know, digging into it more because they really are our main coaches for SEL.
That's great. That's a great asset. Great.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Thanks. Thank you so much for the presentation and all the work behind this. I think just having, all I was thinking while you were presenting it is I wish I had something like this to like make my staff and finance do because I feel like it would benefit them as adults and me. So, and as a kid, as a parent of a child, that's just a worrier. I think it's fantastic. And they're young and I just love how I'm seeing what's going to go on in, for them as they get older. Can, I just have one question because I was kind of excited about the, the support for parents. Because as a parent that has none, like sometimes my, my own kids completely stun me with their ability to talk about their feelings and what they're feeling and how they can do different things that I feel like they're, they're better at it than I am. So, I'm excited to hear that there's some support to parents. Can you explain to me what that might look like?
They may want to take that question. If not, I can start it off. So, Kelly, there's a few things. There are parent letters. So, along with the lesson, there are some tools for teachers to communicate home with parents to be able to use some common vocabulary and strategies, especially as buildings will be doing similar themes. So, for example, self-control might be a theme within a week or a month. And so, there'll be some multiple teachers talking about that and using the same language. And again, then that would be a strategy and a theme that you could also support at home. There's also a parent resource section where parents can log in and see some of the same videos and resources that our teachers use with students. So, those people that are looking for more information and do, you know, some reading or some learning around that topic, there will be a parent section that we are going to explore some more on. I don't think that, you know, every parent's going to log in. They're looking for that. But for those parents that are asking for more information, we have some resources built to point them in the right direction, which will be a nice connection to support again, some students that might need some additional support and having some common language between school and home will be important.
That sounds awesome. I'm really excited and I, I loved everything that we were saying. So, I wish I could, I want to learn. I want to learn it. Thank you guys so much for all the work you put behind it. I think this is just critical for all of our kids and I'm really, really excited for my own and all of our students, just to kind of grow in this space. I think it's so important. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jeff?
Thanks so much. That was a great presentation and thanks for all the hard work. I think it's great that all, all of the schools selected the same programs. So, I think that's going to be very helpful. And I think it's great that, that there's, you know, some access for teachers as well as parents. So, thank you.
Great. Well, I just want to show to all our committee members that are here tonight and our committee members that aren't here. As you saw, we had very large committees. As John said, our work is not done. We're still on that implementation journey and will support. And, you know, as our journey continues. So, we, I think, I think our high school meeting might be tomorrow, John. I think it's Thursday. I could be wrong, but you thought, you thought you missed it. No?
Wednesdays.
Ah, see, I was trying to trick them. But we're still working, but thank you for coming tonight. Your time is valuable and you're busy and it's St. Patrick's Day. So, go have a Guinness, science people. You're on board next. So, greatly appreciate you coming and sharing your expertise and perspective. So, social emotional committee people, thank you very much. Please don't stay on.
Thank you.
You can sign off.
Thank you for everything, people. Unbelievable job.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm going to share my screen.
And then we're going to move to my, my other favorite topic is science. For those of you that don't know, I'm, I'm, I shouldn't say former science teacher. Once a science teacher, always a science teacher, right? So, another one of my favorite topics, I think I have a lot of favorite topics, but I love is science curriculum. So, tonight we have several people here to talk about some of our science curriculum revisions as we shift our curriculum towards the new site. Well, I shouldn't say new. I say new, but now they're several years old. And then we had a pandemic on top of it. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ann and the teachers. And as you kind of get to your part, you can introduce yourself. I think that would be more efficient with time.
Yep. Okay. So, hi, I'm Ann Malloy. I'm Content Curriculum Specialist at Hamner and Highcrest Schools. And I'm here with Becky Granatini, who was in our last, in your last meeting. Ryan Boothroyd, grade six at Highcrest and Summer Cuxton, grade four. E.W. and Joy DePaulis, grade two at Hamner. So, I want to tell you a little bit about, we're here to talk about our science units that we're bringing forward for curriculum adoption and to share some of the great work that our teachers have been doing in science with their students. I want to tell you a little bit about our process because this has been a labor of love since 2016, when the standards first were adopted. We started a district-wide science committee. It was a professional learning committee where we all dug into the standards. We tried to figure out what they were all about. We looked at how they were written and the fact that they are written three dimensionally and they include an science and engineering practice, disciplinary core idea and a cross-cutting concept in each of the, they're called performance expectations, of which students should be able to do by the end of the unit. So, so these standards were all laid out and we really needed to figure out how can we implement these with our students. So, in order to do that, we, we put our student hats on for our committee work and we actually dug into the standards as a committee of learners. And then our committee members helped design and facilitate professional development with staff in much the same way. So, our committee has worked tirelessly to develop tools for teachers to use to help assess the science and engineering practices in each grade level and we will continue to do this work. So, just going back in 2017, 2018, we had our teacher leaders helping to roll out professional development. And then from 2018 to 2020, pretty much teachers have been piloting various units. In the summer of 2019, we were able to bring a team of teachers and curriculum specialists together in the summer to gather and, and write curriculum. And this was a, a three-year plan, which has been delayed due to the pandemic. But we are here today to roll that, that, that curriculum out to you. And Becky?
A lot of what's going on with our, our curriculum writing has really been focused on inquiry. And that's one of the most exciting parts about NGSS. And we've talked about it a little bit before, but, you know, just as a refresher, sort of our guiding philosophy now is the idea that you're, the student, our students are no longer a disseminator or we are no longer a disseminator of knowledge, rather than we're curators of curiosity. And our science, so much of what we've been working on with teachers, yes, we're writing the curriculum. We're also side by side. We're also supporting great pedagogy, right? Like we're, we're working with teachers to have, you know, and processes to support inquiry, providing students with phenomenon and then giving them, teaching into the skills of how do you research? How do you build investigations to answer the questions that you have? And then how do you actually make a claim and support it with evidence and reasoning? So, we've, it's really been an awfully exciting process. And as we implement each of these different new sort of parts to our curriculum, it's been phenomenal to walk into classrooms and to see this happening with our students. So, it's a wonderful guiding philosophy that's leading us to some really exciting times in science education.
Okay, so I, I put two graphics on this slide. And if we look at the graphic on the left, it's the typical flow of an NGSS unit. So, each inquiry unit is designed to follow a similar flow with the science and engineering practices embedded throughout the unit. Basically, every unit begins with an anchoring phenomenon, as you can see on the left, where students work in groups to discuss what they notice and wonder, and then they share their initial ideas. Next, they draw a model to explain what they can and cannot see. And after viewing each group's shared model, they identify questions that they will need to answer in order to explain the phenomenon. Each unit integrates research and investigations and lots of talk in an attempt to make sense of the anchoring phenomenon. If you think of it as a giant puzzle, students keep adding pieces to the puzzle until it is complete and they are able to once again return to the anchoring phenomenon at the end of the unit and fully explain it using newly acquired academic language that they learn throughout the unit. If you take a look at the graphic on the right, you're going to notice that it's color-coded. And this color-coded, like I said, it was a three-year plan. Our green units were the ones that were, were, they're finished. They have been, teachers have been trained and the curriculum is, is done. And those are the ones that we're bringing forth to you today. These teachers have received training on their yellow units as well, that they are currently in draft form. And the red units are in process. So, some teachers were in the midst of piloting when the pandemic hit and some units, we are still looking to explore resource, resources. Now, we plan to reconvene our committee and resume our work in moving forward with our science curriculum writing, choosing materials for the units which have not been finished and having our science committee teachers pilot with students next year. So, we're still in the midst. There's still a lot of excitement about it. We have teachers that are exploring new things every day. And so, it, you know, we just were, we had a little bit of a blip in our, in our work. So, these are the units. We're going to take you through a brief overview of each of the units. And I'm going to, let me see, I think I have to. Can I hear that? Oh, I can. I'm not super familiar with Zoom. So, this is new to me as well. Okay. All right. So, this is our kindergarten unit on sunlight and weather.
Do you like for me to sort of?
Yeah. You want to do that one?
Sure. So, in kindergarten, the topic is sunlight and weather. And in this one, students are developing an understanding sort of of the patterns. We're looking for the patterns and the variations in our local weather. And they have some fun with weather forecasting and, you know, sort of like looking at, you know, they might do actually like what you might wear during, you know, for certain types of weather, what you might expect in certain types of weather. And again, like preparing for and responding to severe types of weather. So, in this, students are expected to demonstrate proficiency and they, they're, we're really working on like becoming scientific, right? Like how to becoming scientists. We want the students to start asking questions and, you know, developing and using models. And models is something, that's a term you're going to hear a lot of in, in all science instruction. It's really sort of like the beginnings of, of understanding. It's like a visual understanding, a representation of their understanding. So, they're starting to develop some models of their thinking. In this, like Ann was showing you that, that kind of circle, the, the process of our scientific investigations. We're starting that as early as kindergarten. We're having students participate in the different parts of those, the, the entire inquiry process. We have students sort of. We have students sort of side by side carrying out investigations. We might be doing it in a more modeled way at that point. But we're still doing those kinds of investigations to start to lay the, the groundwork. For, you know, students as they continue, they'll be using the same format. But of course, the content will become more elevated throughout the different grade levels.
And I just want to show you on this, this is like a typical cover sheet where we have the performance expectations here. Looking back and looking forward, we included like what's next on each of, in each of our units. We have our learning outcomes where we have the standards in here. And then on the, we have the science and engineering practices that are a focus for each unit, the disciplinary core ideas. And the cross cutting concepts which are included. Down below, we have our connections to ELA and literacy and mathematics. And then underneath we have, these are all live links in our live binder. This is an awesome unit that was developed by kindergarten. It's their first unit of the year. Where they launch it with setting, setting up steam centers to really introduce what do scientists do? So this is kind of a unit that carries through, through their calendar and throughout the entire year. So this one is a real neat one. So now I'll just pull up quickly and I want to, I don't want to keep you, so I want to make sure we. Becky, you want to talk about?
So in grade one, again, they're using that same inquiry process, but with a new content. So we're, we're thinking about matter in grade one. And we're thinking about the properties and the different phases of matter, solids and liquids in particular. And the role of temperature within those, right? We do observations, like what do you notice about different, so observable, observable, the different properties of different types of matter. And purpose of different types of matter, what, what they might be used for. So they, they might be looking at, you know, different types of objects. They might be weighing different substances and, and making some determinations and using that to guide some, or, you know, to provide investigations for their larger question as well as size. So again, it, using the same formats, it's an interesting topic. Because of course, there are a lot of great cross curricular connections as well, which Anne showed us was at the bottom, right? That's one of the really nice things about these science units. They lend themselves really well to cross curricular connections. So that's for, that's our grade one green unit that we're, that we're sharing with you tonight.
And our grade three.
Yep. And again, in grade three, we again, talk about matter, but this time it's a little bit different. Because in grade three, we're talking about the transfer of energy throughout systems, right? So it's about matter and how it changes. So this time we're looking at solids, liquids, this time it, it also includes gases. And plasma by properties and how it looks. Now we're going to add also there's temperature, but mixing of substances as well. So there are some variations of what we saw in first grade. It looks different in third grade. But we also take a look at physical and chemical changes within this. So it's, 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 it's a lot of fun. The kids love it. We do a lot of different types of experiments. With ice cubes and different types of things, temperature and impact on those kinds of things. And what other, I'm just looking, some great representation from teachers here. I don't want to make sure that we. Yep. And then earth system, this, this is one that we've had very positive responses with. Teachers and students seem to like this one a lot. Water, this is an earth systems unit, water's role in earth spheres. So the, the phenomenon begins with how much water is there on earth? And does the amount of water change over time? That's kind of like the guiding phenomenon. And there are lots of investigations and simulations that go along with that. And lots of different ways that they're observing and collecting data. It's a lot of fun to walk into the classrooms when they're doing this. They have all different kinds of charts going. They have, you know, really large rolls of paper kind of rolled out where they're keeping track of, of, you know, almost like bar graphs where they'd be keeping track of different amounts of water. So it's a, it's a highly interactive unit and the kids seem to really, really enjoy this one.
And they use mystery science to teach this unit. Yeah, highly engaging for them. Okay. And now I'm going to talk to you about the sixth grade a little bit. So sixth grade, we're bringing two units to be adopted. And I'm going to go through the little mini unit with you. And this one is cells. So I'll tell you a little bit about the middle school process because the, the middle school standards are lumped with, the sixth grade standards are lumped with the middle school six through eight. So the curriculum specialists and I, Becky and, and Sarah Johnson went up to the middle school several times. To do some of this work. And we actually took all of the performance expectations. And we had them printed out on sheets of paper. And we actually laid them all out. We worked with the seventh and eighth grade science teachers. To then determine which performance expectations were going to be taught at each grade level and which ones made the most sense. So that's kind of how we did that work. And we also, Diana Beardsley was a lead in that as well. Cause she did, she did a lot of committee work with us. So we, we kind of planned that out. And this cells unit helps to prepare students for the deeper work that they'll do in cells in seventh grade. So it's a, it's a little mini unit that, that our seventh grade teachers had said, this would be an awesome way to get them introduced to the structure and function of cells and prepare them for seventh grade. So they do do a little bit of work with that. And like I said, it is a mini unit. It's only, it's a two week intended. It's usually done towards the end of the school year and it helps to get them ready for middle school. So I'm going to go back to my slides. Okay. And now I'm going to introduce Joy DePaulis, who's our grade two teacher. And she's going to talk to you about our forces and interactions, pushes and pulls unit.
Hello, thumbs up if you can hear me.
I can only see Sally.
Okay, great. Okay. Hi, everybody. Well, before me was the SEL. And I think the two most important things for me as an elementary teacher is SEL and science. So what a great night and combo together. I often say I'd like to teach science, everything through science. And I think this unit is really captivates that. So what we do is we, I have a picture there and you can see too, hey, there's Georgia Kelly. I don't know if you're still here. So that's Kelly's daughter, Giorgio, when I had her. And that's a catapult that she built. And then there's another pair of girls next to her up in the top and they built the catapult. That's actually the culmination of the unit. And we actually just begin with simple motions of push and pull. And we get the vocabulary out there. And we're reading and we're researching. And then it's actually a writing unit. It's not science. It's not a reading unit. It's actually a writing unit. But it's such a great, I, I keep saying it's the triangle, reading, writing and science. And I don't know how much better you can get than that from a teacher's point of view. And then throw in NGSS. And all I have to say is, I wonder, what do you think about that? I don't have to do anything. It's just beautiful. I'm so curious about that. And it's just great. Kids actually will write a lab report. And we are scientists and we write like scientists. And we start from day one. We'll model one and then it just goes into studying the words. We, we pose questions, we hypothesize, we conduct experiments. We write the data, we look at the data, we analyze the data. So there's our math. We look at the results of the lab report. And then at the end, we conclude and think, how, now what questions do we have about the world? So it is just so highly engaging. It's a wonderful way. It's in the writer's workshop informational unit and it's just great. So there's mystery dugs that go along. There's a picture down at the bottom. And if you wanted to see what a mystery dug was, this is, I, I, the link is there. I think Summer was the one who did that after me. But you can actually see a mystery Doug lesson. And these are two kids. It brings in engineering. There, it's just push pins on a cardboard and a ping pong ball. And that's it. The catapult, catapult ping pong balls. It's ping pong balls are flying all over the room. Compare that to cotton balls. It's, it's just amazing. And then we're writing about it. And then we're reading and researching. So it's just, it's just so much fun. So students are able to design and conduct the experiments. It's so integrative. It's so engaging. They use matchbox cars at the beginning down ramps. And so they learn all about that. It, it's just a wonderful unit. And I love the whole science, the NGSS. I'm working on another one of the units and that's the plant life. And you can see some of the corn that we use. And then we do a whole phenomenon with that. And I actually have right now in my classroom, corn that's about two feet high, that actually grew from one kernel. It's actually has many corns on it from the fall. And it's been sitting on the radiator and it's amazing. There's also Skype a scientist. So I don't know if you guys have heard about that. There's a picture of, of, of my class down there, Skyping with the scientist. We did that two years ago. He was actually in the US forestry field. And we actually got this picture posted in one of their publications. And it just said a school in Connecticut. So how fantastic was that? There's checklist. It's, it's just, it's just a great unit. So I guess you can, I love science.
I, I know. Joy is my girl. She's been working with us from the start and she continues to, to pilot units for us. That, that corn unit that she does is one of my favorites. And we will definitely, that will, that one will be going into final draft form. Because it's just wonderful. It's a wonderful way to launch science. They usually do it in the fall with harvest corn. And it, it starts with a phenomenon where she talks about her husband leaving the corn out in the water. And, and then they have to try to figure out, is it alive? What's going to happen? And it's really neat how it actually grows right from the cob. So it's real, it's a, that's a fun one too. But we, we have tried, as we were working on curriculum. We tried to connect it to our reading and writing units wherever possible. So this is a TC unit for reading and writing ELA. And we just connected the science content to it. And it just, it works beautifully because the more you can make connections, then the, the better it is for our kids. Joy, are you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set. I think we go to Summer next.
Okay. Summer, my, oh.
Oh, there you go. I think you're.
Are you muted? Doesn't it say you're muted?
Okay.
Oh, I think I can hear you now. Okay, sorry. My, my computer froze. So. Yep. Hopefully it'll work. Technology is lovely when it works. And it's always right when I'm about to present something. That's when it freezes up. I could hear the whole rest of the meeting fine. So anyway, I'm going to talk about our survival and adaptations unit. It is a wonderful unit. It's super engaging for the kids. Anytime kids can talk about animals and nature, they are all in. So this one is also tied into some of our reading and writing units. This unit actually started as two smaller units that we combined into one large unit. That we teach over the course of two different bends, kind of a similar setup to how we do our readers and writers workshop. Where we have that one big idea and then we build on it in the second bend. So the first half of the unit, we start with our little phenomenon there. Would you mind clicking the link just so they could see? It's really short. And so it, it's very quick. We watched this owl. Got your mouse?
Oh, I'm not looking.
There is, there is a little trigger warning before the video saying it might be shocking. So we watched that video and then the students start asking questions. Wondering, okay, well, you know, the owl caught the mouse, but how? Why? And then they start asking all sorts of questions. Well, the mouse was white and the snow was white. And how did the owl get their talons to go around the, the mouse? And how did, then they start thinking about the inner workings of the owl. And okay, its muscles and its brain and how it had to see the, the animal. And so it keeps going. And as we go through the unit, and this unit comes through mystery science. Or this parts of this unit come through mystery science. They really do a lot, great job with modeling. They do like a cow eyeball dissection. The kids don't do it in class. They do it on the screen and we watch and then we, we make our own models of eyeballs using magnifiers, like those little credit card magnifiers that you put, keep in your wallet. And they notice how the light comes in and the amount of light and how that affects the image that's projected. And so that first half of the unit, it's called the human machine. And it's all about the structure and how things work for living things to move. The second bend of the unit, we, now that they know that every living thing has this structure that helps it survive. We start thinking about how animals and living things need to survive in their environment. We talk about, you know, we actually start looking at fossils, which is fun because it's something they haven't done really. You know, they all get so interested in dinosaurs when they're in like first grade and they don't get to do it as bigger kids. And then in this unit, they start looking at fossils again, noticing what can the fossils tell us? How did these animals live in their environments? And then we know that some of these animals survive and some might not have survived. And then what caused that? So we start thinking about structural and behavioral adaptations. Which goes back into our first part of our unit where we're looking at the human body. And the, you know, the different systems in animals. You know, as you can see in some of these pictures, these were pictures from the beginning of last year where we were imagining life without thumbs. So the kids took masking tape and taped down their thumbs. They were trying to tie their shoes, put on a sock, open a door, pick up change. Write their name, things that were definitely more challenging and they had their data sheets. Because as scientists, we're always collecting our data. We're trying to report it. We're learning to create our own data tables and report out our information in an organized way. We share our information with the other scientists in the class so we can compare data and see if we have a consensus. And the, you know, they're constantly answering these big questions. One of the other things that we do in the second half of the unit is we use some resources from Science A to Z, which is another great resource we have. One of my favorite things on there are these mystery I files. And so it's a set of different articles that, there's about six articles in the set and they have this big question. So in this case, it's how do animals depend on their environment to survive? And so each article talks about a different environment. And what the kids do is that they work in their groups and they notice the similarities between the articles. And so, you know, again, it's reading, writing, looking across text, synthesizing. And bringing their ideas together to come up with another big idea. So not only are they doing the simulations, but they're also getting the research part of it, which is wonderful. So, oh, and you know, there's some other great things. Too. I, I could go on all night, but I won't. But there's this other great simulation we do that's like a game and that we talk about the changes in the environment. And they, it's about the brown and the green and nulls down in Florida. And how the brown and nulls were actually an invasive species. And so if you go to Florida now compared to, you know, 25, 30 years ago, you used to see all the green and nulls. Now you see the brown and nulls who, because they actually eat the green and nulls. And so the kids do a simulation. Oh, I'm, am I frozen up? I think I'm frozen.
No.
No, I'm not. Okay. You guys are frozen. Just your picture, but we can still hear you. Okay. And that, so they do the simulation. Where they, each of them has different adaptations for their null babies. Some of them have more. Nope, Summer, we lost you.
Yeah, we lost, we lost you. Yeah.
We lost, we lost your video. We lost you both. If they survive or not. Cause my, my computer keeps saying it's unstable.
Yeah.
All right. And so that's a little bit about the fourth grade unit. Again, it's wonderful. And I'll turn it over to Ryan for a sixth grade.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Ryan Boothroyd. I teach sixth grade at Highcrest. I'm going to be talking about our waves and electromagnetic radiation unit. We actually start the year with this unit. I've taught it now for about three years. The students love starting the year with a hands-on science unit where. The students love starting the year with a hands-on science unit where we first start to explore how waves have a pattern of specific wavelength, frequency and amplitude. So the students are investigating properties of sound and light waves, which is interesting. I used to teach fifth grade and knowing, having that background really helped me to learn more, you know, teaching this unit, which is really helpful. And they discover patterns that occur with these types of waves. So the initial phenomenon that we do is the students investigate the electromagnetic spectrum. And then they use that to form their ideas and generate questions. So we, I've used breakout rooms a lot this year. So that was such a helpful tool in order to build science discussion. Really having students interact with each other and building their initial ideas. Talk and discussion is so important in science and really you've seen throughout each of the units that we've talked about. Really having the students engage in their ideas and talk with each other and build through their collaboration is really helpful. So in order to design a scientific experiment, the students learned about independent and dependent variables and constants when conducting investigations. So this year we used a program called Chrome Music Lab and you can see on the, on the slide there. So students were using this program where they were looking at the appearance and the sound, the appearance of the sound waves based off of the volume or the pitch. So using that Chrome Music Lab allowed them to explore how the volume and the pitch of the sound affects the appearance of the sound waves. I also taught them how to write procedures and they tested their experiment using Chrome Music Lab. After they tested their experiment, they researched properties of waves and they connected their research to their data from their investigation. So they use their data and their research to write a claim with evidence and reasoning, which you heard. Yeah, that was a big part of the scientific practices. They've adjusted their evidence and reasoning to include precise scientific vocabulary that they had learned through their research and in our breakout room discussions. So that's kind of like the first part of our unit was looking at sound waves and how volume and pitch affected the sound waves. And you could see an example of a student's claim with their evidence and reasoning. So the second part of our unit was about how waves are reflected, absorbed or transmitted. So students learn the characteristics of a science model, which you heard Anne mentioned before. Modeling is so important and really looking at their initial models and their final models and seeing what they've learned throughout the unit is really amazing. So they've learned the characteristics of the model and they used the anchor chart that we created with properties of a model to describe their initial thoughts about how light travels and how it's reflected, absorbed or transmitted. So this year we were really creative with how we shared our science models. So there's a platform called Padlet that we've been using in all content areas. And I was able to put students' models on Padlet and they were able to engage in discussion based off of each other's models. So they were asking questions. They were giving initial ideas. They were giving feedback about models and we use that to help determine our driving questions for the unit as well. They researched light waves using various nonfiction texts, online videos and websites to determine how light waves are reflected, absorbed or transmitted. Some of the hands-on experience that we did in class, there's a picture of one of them there. We use mirrors and flashlights to explore angle of incidence and angle of reflection. We also use the flashlights with prisms to determine how light is refracted and how colored paddles. We use colored paddles as well to determine how colors are absorbed or reflected. And then we also looked at, we had two containers where one, they were both filled with water, but one was wrapped in black and one was wrapped in white. And we measured the, the temperature throughout the day outside and we looked at how black absorbs more than white does. And that was really engaging for them to see how black absorbs more than white. So to conclude our unit, they wrote their claim about how light waves are reflected, absorbed or transmitted. And then you can see an example of a final model there demonstrating what they've learned throughout the unit. And it's really remarkable to compare their initial models versus their final models. And it's awesome when the students really see that too. I'm actually finishing up my weather unit this week. And we do multiple investigations throughout that unit. And it's amazing how much they've learned because I give them the guiding questions on their initial model and they, I don't know anything about this. That's okay. That's what you're going to be learning during our unit. And now to see them when they're making their final model, oh, wow, I know all about air pressure. I know all about cold, cold and warm fronts. So it's awesome to see what they've learned throughout the unit and to see that reflected in their final models.
Okay. All right. This just makes my heart so happy. And I just wanted to thank the teachers for coming to share. It's amazing. You're, you're doing such awesome work in science. So I'm not sure if you have any questions or comments for us regarding our curriculum process and, and what we're doing. If you wanted to learn more about, you, you heard us mention the science and engineering practices, the disciplinary core ideas, cross cutting concepts. You could go to nextgenscience.org and learn more about each one of those things because that's what we use to guide our curriculum writing.
Yeah, and I have a question. First of all, yeah, it's so good to hear you. And, and you know, I'm in awe. I really am at what these students are doing because these teachers are teaching them what a real scientist does. And I do remember the second grade one that was related to Lucy Cockins. And it really is an amazing thing to see what these children are capable of doing. But that's number one. Number two, because of this pandemic, have we been able to do partnering and working together and doing graphs together and well, acting like real scientists would? That kind of been put on the shelf for a while?
So it just, it looks different, Bobby. We, we've done, we've integrated some teacher modeling. We have students, we've created kits. We ordered a lot of materials so that we could create kit so that students don't have to share their materials, but they're working side by side. And then they're doing a lot of discussion at a distance or in a breakout room. So it does look different, but they are still engaged.
Bobby, I also kind of, I differentiated by having the students that were at home maybe doing the research portion and the students that were in school doing the hands-on experiments. And yes, you had a couple of students that were full remote learners. So I kind of prepped them with their families that might, it might be an experiment that they could do at home. So for example, we did the egg in the bottle doing air pressure. So I kind of prepped them. You need a hard boiled egg, you need a plastic bottle. So you can do this at home. So they were able to do those experiments at home with us. But trying just to vary the research portion versus the, the hands-on experiments in class and varying that really worked out in terms of having, you know, when we were in the hybrid learning where your students were there only two days a week.
And even worked for second grade. So like with the corn, we prepped ahead of time. It was prepping ahead of time. That was the big thing. We had the packet ready. The parents were fantastic and came and picked up things for the full remote learners. I was breaking harvest corn so everyone could have some to feel at home. So it, it just took a lot of extra prepping and a little bit of adjusting here and there, but I think the corn unit was just as successful this fall as it was last fall.
Ah, so good to hear. Great. And moving forward though, we're going to go back to them all working together.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think it's been amazing. Ryan touched upon it when he was talking about creating padlets so that the kids could still do their gallery walks, which is a really important part of that cycle that Anne talked about. Finding ways to kind of carry out, we created virtual bookshelves, which allowed for online reading. So kids could then do their research, but with online books. There were also jam boards, which are ways of, you know, it's, it's like what we were showing during SEL with a little sticky notes. It looked like sticky notes. That's actually a feature that they can use to, for kids to be able to put in their ideas about what's going on in a phenomenon. So it was incredible to see sort of like, as I mentioned, like the, the pedagogy, right? Like we had like one or two years to kind of really teach into that. But then the teachers were like off and running and we were going through all of the, all these different possible resources, the, the, the padlet, the jam board, virtual bookshelves, all of these different things, putting them into play so that the kids still could move through the cycle, albeit a slightly at home, bringing the corn home, then doing the virtual bookshelf. It, it was a little different than it typically would be, but I think we got a lot of the key elements in. So it was really, it was, it was fascinating to see how quickly it evolved.
What an awesome job you people did. Awesome.
I agree. Thank you so much for the presentations. I loved, we're big, we're big lovers of Mr. Paulus in this house. So I loved her presentation. I remember when Georgia did that and she was fantastic. And she's in fourth grade now and she's telling me all about science. And I have a first grade, the science is so much fun. And it looks so much different than, you know, what I was used to. So thank you so much for being here at like eight o'clock on St. Patty's Day to walk us.
But that's why for the board, this is the best committee to be on. Cause you're most interesting. It really teaches so fast.
I have to say though, that, that all of these teachers, there's one word that keeps going through my mind and that's persistence with a capital P. Right? Because the new science standards came out several years ago. Totally teacher-led committee, meeting after school on, you know, on, you know, outside of their teaching day and piloting and finding time during the day to meet and try and collaborate and order and all this on top of what everything they're doing. And so please know all your time and energy is, you know, paying off for your students, but also students across the districts as we share these units and resources. But it has been highly persistent and, and even though we're in a pandemic, while our, our written documents haven't changed, I still get emails about this material and that material and this pilot and Ryan. And Ryan wants to pilot something new and right. And so that persistence and just creativity of making sure we have the best opportunity for our students is greatly appreciated. And even more amazing in the middle of a pandemic, but I think that speaks to the flexibility of our teachers. And they've kind of gotten a rhythm and, you know, off they go and their innovation is so high that it's greatly appreciated. So yes, it's warmed my heart today too. So.
Now, is there going to be just grade science assessment this year? Are they going to be?
Yes.
Best, okay. And I do know the Keen Foundation after-school program did have a science program that many students were part of.
Yeah, I think, I think every classroom or almost every classroom was involved in it. And they're actually coming to do a second, or I think probably in the right, in the middle of doing a second lesson for our fifth grade students right now.
Well, good luck on that. Good luck.
Jim, any, any questions for you?
No, great, great job. Really appreciate it. My wife teaches science in another district, so I think maybe she'll want to take a look at this presentation when it goes online, but great work.
Yeah. So many, committee members, I just need kind of your approval to move these to the full board for approval. Were you good with that? Good?
Yes.
Great.
I'm in.
Yeah. Are you going to present it Sally or are we going to have the teachers present some of it or?
I know it'll just be for approval. Actually, if one of you can do the updates, again, Chris isn't here today. So at the full board, if you could just kind of, I'm sure he's going to ask one of you to do an update. So it wouldn't be a full board presentation. We do our presentations here in Zoom programs and services. So one of you wanted to just kind of do a quick update on it, but I, I can't replace what they just told you. They, they do this every day in every subject area. I wouldn't forget justice. So.
Deb did give us the, some of the slides, like the specific slides with the overview and stuff. So one of us can, yeah, shabbily put it forth. It's not nearly as good as what we saw today, but it's their fault.
That's right. You'll do a great job. So, and we'll link the presentations into the minutes. So. Well, with that said, Jim, do you think we, do we have other business?
I don't think there's any other business. Kelly is saying no.
No, we don't have any more business.
I think at eight sixteen, we can adjourn and thank you guys for coming and joining. Go and celebrate St. Patty's Day if you are, are inclined to do so. So thank you very much.
Good night.